Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November twenty-second. The Board is in session to conduct its open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. If we could have you identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Evan Abadon, Procurement.
Noah Hill, Procurement.
Bob Batista, Expo Idaho.
Peter Humland, Paramedics.
Joe Lombardo, Emergency Management Community Resilience.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Bob McQuade, Assessor.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Beth Maughan, Treasurer.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, our first order of business is unfinished business. I will accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table. Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, first up, the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight, Ada County Parks and Recreation Waterways Master Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The evaluation team for RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight has completed the evaluation of the sole proposal for this project and would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay.
Did you read it?
Yes, be happy to. It's a letter dated November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight. Dear members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the sole response for RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight. Final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final ranking in order of evaluation scoring is as follows. Number one, Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC with a score of ninety point four-zero. So it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight to Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC as the number-one ranked proposer.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Happy we got one.
Oh, one.
Very happy. Yes, Mr. Chair, go ahead and move to accept the final rankings for RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight, Ada County Parks and Waterways Master Plan update and accept the evaluation committee's recommendation and award the RFP two-three-zero-zero-eight to Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC with a score of ninety point four-zero.
I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion? You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two-three-two-three-zero-one-zero, Expo Idaho Interim Event Security.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The evaluation team for RFP two-three-zero-one-zero has completed the evaluations of the three proposals for this project and would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay. Did you read the letter?
I'd be happy to. Letter dated November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-three-zero-one-zero. Dear members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two-three-zero-one-zero. A final rating of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Mav Event Services with a score of ninety-four point six-seven. Number two, McCray Global Protection Corporation with a score of sixty-eight point three-four. Number three, Protective Principles LLC with a score of sixty-four point zero-four. It is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-three-zero-one-zero to Mav Event Services as the number-one ranked proposer.
Okay. Any discussion?
Looks like that's the company we've been using, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good job for us.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the final rankings for RFP two-three-zero-one-zero, Expo Idaho Interim Event Security, and accept the evaluation committee's recommendation and award RFP two-three-zero-one-zero to Mav Event Services with a score of ninety-four point six-seven.
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, we have, next, a new business. We have, I will open the public hearing on resolution number two-eight-one-seven. We've been anticipating this one for a while. Resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the weed budget.
Don't look at Ryan. That's what he said.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the weed budget?
No, but we always laugh at this. Every single time. It's like children, right?
Adam's on the bridge.
Okay.
I get it.
Bob got it.
You get it. We're happy. Okay. Adam, would you like to make a comment on the weed budget?
Every time.
There you go.
He doesn't dare after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not at this time. This is just the BLM grant where we go out and control noxious weeds on federal ground and BLM pays us to do that.
All right. Good enough.
No weed will be bought from this department budget.
All right. Well, I will close the public hearing on resolution number two-eight-one-seven. Is there any discussion? I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution two-eight-one-seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, I will, we have a fire protection annexation. I'll open the public hearing on these annexations. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on accept a motion on approval of annexation of Terra View LLC into the Eagle Fire Protection District and Terra View LLC into the Starr Fire Protection District. Any discussion?
Nope, I read the agreements.
Hearing none. Let's, I'll-
You want two motions? You want one.
One's fine.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve the order of annexation of the Terra View LLC into the Eagle Fire Protection District and also into the Starr Fire Protection District as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have opening of bid two-three-zero-one-two, Ada County Elections Ballot Printing Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We received one response for bid two-three-zero-one-two, the Ada County Elections Ballot Printing Services. Noah has our bonfire procurement system queued up and if you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed.
We're ready.
All righty. So for today's purposes, we'll be looking at the name of the bidder and the bid amount per standard ballot.
Okay.
Okay, so we have it up there now. The bidder is Fort Orange Press Incorporated and it looks like they've bid twenty-five cents per ballot.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Phil, how does that compare to what we've been spending?
Um, so it's, I think, I'm not as solid on here, but it's per page. So it's in the ballpark. It's a little bit low, I think, for where we're at. But, I mean, it is within pennies. But, right, pennies add up when you purchase hundreds or thousands of them, so.
That's right. Bob, you need a date. We need a date to table it, right?
Yes, Commissioner Kenyon, we will need a date to table this too. We're gonna have to review their bid, obviously, and see if they can fly. But if we could table this for award to the December sixth, two thousand twenty-two open business meeting.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I move to table the award of bid two-three-zero-one-two, Ada County Elections Ballot Printing Services to December sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have licenses, catering permits, and a new license. I'll accept the motion on the licensing and catering permits.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three catering permits and one new license, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have with us our distinguished clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I've actually been out for a little bit, but I want to start by just, Saul is on here and really singing the praises of Saul and the elections team, as well as Trent. Like I mentioned, I was out, but yesterday we had the Secretary of State's office came and audited our election. All right, so on Friday evening, the Secretary of State's office randomly selected counties to audit. We have a ninety percent chance of getting selected every time randomly. And so, and so coincidentally, we got selected again.
Yeah.
Yes. But I think the audit was a really big success. They had changed up their process a little bit. So they did a hand count of, I think it was a constitutional amendment in this case, and went through, there was, out of fifteen hundred ballots that they reviewed, there was one vote change and it had changed from what our equipment read as an overvote, meaning someone had marked two boxes where the auditors found that they could determine the voter intent and counted it as a vote. So it's not like a vote flipped so much as just, there was probably additional markings that, you know, the computer couldn't read as clearly as the human eye. And so that was the only variance in it. They also did an inventory of our ballots. So what that means is, not only did they count the ballots that they were auditing, they also went and counted the unvoted ballots and looked at how many ballots did we send out initially and compared the unvoted ballots, the spoiled ballots, and the voted ballots to make sure that they all balanced and that was successful as well. So no surprises, right? But when you are doing this level of work and this level of detail, it's pretty impressive. And I think, you know, Saul deserves a ton of credit because I, I don't think, I was telling him yesterday, I don't think I could have been away without anybody else having done it, but he is very meticulous. They were very well-prepared. And actually, despite being the largest county and though I think the largest number of ballots audited, they finished earlier in the day than some of the other counties that are much smaller than our size, right? And so, yeah, so that says a lot and I think it's just the efficiency of it. I was, you know, a cool thing too, because I was on the opposite side. I was in Denver yesterday, but I was on the live stream watching them work periodically throughout the day. So it just shows the enhancements we've made in terms of security and transparency as well. And so, huge kudos to the elections team and Saul for the work that they've done.
Yes, some states are still counting, aren't they?
There are states that are still trying to get through. I think Idaho is gonna be, it's gonna be an interesting discussion because unfortunately, thankfully, well, for a whole host of reasons, but some counties, Bonneville County was audited on Saturday and you can imagine that didn't go over real well, like having to try and bring people in and to work all Saturday. And so we need to look at our timelines because Idaho's timelines are pretty compressed. But, yeah, other states, I mean, we've been done counting since, you know, election, the morning of election, the following day. And so now it's just making sure everything's lined up. And then tomorrow after minute two, I'll probably go over, is the State Board of Canvassers will be meeting. So the other audits, I think, Bonneville County is the same thing, one vote change, right? So again, it really shows that our election system works. And I think one of the unique things this cycle, I mean, I could tell you stories about it, but we did have people who I will say were skeptical of the process involved and working and that people have walked away feeling a lot better. So even some of the auditors were appointed because they were skeptics, but they got to see the process and they got to hand look at the ballots and say, yep, nope, these are accurate results. And so I think that speaks volumes to the process. I mean, you guys have all seen it before, but, you know, there are plenty of people who haven't and so it's a good thing to get to see the tools that we have in place.
Well, good. Do you have to do anything with that one audited vote that showed up legally or?
No, it's kind of interesting. There's a process. Thankfully, we've never explored what happens if things are gonna change in terms of outcomes, but we're nowhere close in terms of the margin difference to, and it has absolutely no impact on any of the races. So, yeah.
Well, thank you, Saul.
Thank you.
Are you gonna get some sleep now?
I think he's headed to the mountains this afternoon for a well-deserved break.
Hello, everyone. Phil, thank you for all those kind words. Yeah, it's, it's been a long couple of weeks, but I feel like we're in a pretty good spot. So we'll keep cruising along here and really appreciate, again, all the support from Commissioners and everyone else within the county. It goes a long ways for us, so we really appreciate it.
Good work.
Yeah, well, thank you. We appreciate that. We appreciate that we have good, solid, accurate elections. All right. Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we have, next up, the Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have some personnel actions. I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have with us today our distinguished assessor.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just a few things here. We're just in the process of doing our physical inspection of all the properties. By statute, we have to do twenty percent. We are, of that twenty percent, we're seventy-three percent finished. We're ahead of the schedule. If we were on schedule, we'd be at about sixty-seven percent, so we're way ahead, very comfortable. We want a physical inspection all wrapped up by the end of the year. Once that's completed, then we start analyzing all of the sales to make sure that they're arms-length sales and then calculating what the trend's going to be for this next year on assessments. Just looking at the MLS, and I really like the MLS numbers because we should be reasonably close to those numbers. This year, as of October, this is year-over-year, October with twenty-two to twenty-one, we're up five percent on all single-family residential, off four percent for existing. That's comparing October twenty-one to twenty-two. To me, the most important number, though, is the year-to-date. Year-to-date, we're up fourteen percent on single-family residential and on existing, we're up about nine percent. So we're probably gonna end the year, even though the market does show some, it's slowing down, it's still probably the year they're gonna end up with an increasing value. Uh, got a few tax cancellations here. Some of those are based upon BTA decisions. And then lastly, I don't know if anybody heard that screaming coming across the parking lot this morning.
No.
No.
You have a mouse in our office. No, we contacted operations and they're gonna take care of it for us.
If he wasn't that was screaming.
Nobody was. Actually Brad was because he just thought, oh my gosh, what do we have here? He just got back from vacation and.
It's like that Geico commercial, right? Replay. Yeah, you screamed.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Challenge flag.
Yeah, the challenge flag, exactly. You screamed.
Apparently there have been some signs of mice in there, but no one has reported it at all.
Maybe it's cute.
It is. It's black, they say.
Oh.
Oh.
Maybe they've named it.
With nice big round ears. It says, Brad said it is the cutest mouse he has ever seen.
Although, don't call Ops then.
Yeah.
Call Weed and Pest.
Call Weed. Call Adam.
Yeah, yeah. That's everybody in the assessor's office, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We have a number of tax cancellations, which are not cancellations, but merely adjustments. But statutory requirement, as we call them, tax cancellations. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the thirty tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-two. As listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're fortunate to have our distinguished treasurer with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The priority for our office has been balancing and mailing the two thousand twenty-two tax bills on behalf of all of the taxing districts. So the final bill should be hitting mailboxes today or tomorrow. Our Cloverdale facility is open. I will just note that these tax cancellations just approved, so these adjustments are not reflected on the bills. So bills have gone out at the full amount. We will now process these adjustments and notify the taxpayer of the new amount due. And I'd also just like to thank the offices and departments who will be helping us. There's a few offices and departments that have, they're less busy during this time, so they're able to offer a few hours to come help us, which is really great just in terms of the cross-training, collaboration, and it also helps us keep our costs down in terms of overtime or outside help and burnout. So really appreciate the support from the office and departments. Taxes will be due December twentieth.
Just before Christmas.
Right.
Okay.
That's it from our office.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, we, next up, have approval of minutes. I'll accept a motion on the approval of minutes, both for public hearing and for indigent services.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have another, a number of grants for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chair, before we make a motion, we have Joe Lombardo here and he probably wants to speak to the Homeland Security Grant, Grants.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yes, we greatly encourage you to sign them so we can bring those awards into our budget. That's the standard grant funds that we use. The EMPG grant is what funds our office and it's matched by the six cities in the Highway District and then the Homeland Security grant money, the SHSP funds are used for building capabilities with all of our area partner, public safety agencies and public. So once those are signed, we get an attestation through the clerk's office and then go through all the processes to bring it into our budget so we can keep on moving.
And the total amount is six hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, seventy-three cents with no match required.
Okay. Well, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve grant numbers twenty-two oh eight dash A B and the associated agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the doc, sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve grant number um, two-two-zero-nine dash A B and the associated agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You've got some money, Joe.
You got some money coming out. Yeah, next up, we have Expo Idaho, interim events, four of them. Sweetheart Dance. Okay, that's interesting. All right. Any, I'll accept a motion on them.
Not as interesting as the Colossal Girl. What is that? That's the Comic-Con.
That's the Comic-Con.
Yeah. Those two go really well together, don't they?
They should.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have Parks and Waterways. First up is an Allied Universal Agreement Delegation of Duties at Parks, Barbara Park in Oregon Trailhead. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the Allied Universal Agreement Delegation of Duties at Barbara Park in Oregon Trailhead.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have Barbara Park and Event Center and a number of events. Looks like there's lots of weddings coming up and a few other items. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the nine Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have a number of agreements. We have seven agreements. I've reviewed the agreements. Is there any discussion or question about any of the agreements?
I don't have any.
Hearing none. I'll accept a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second that. Okay, any, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Or is there any other business that needs to be brought before the board for the open business meeting? Hearing none. We're in recess. Good morning. Today is, uh, Tuesday, November twenty-second. Uh, the time is, uh, nine twenty-five. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly open, uh, business meeting. All three Commissioners are present, if you could identify yourself, uh, for the record.
Peter Helmet Paramedics.
Paul Perkins, Ada County Clerk.
Phil McGrane, Clerk.
And we have one guy back here. And we have IT guy, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, uh, we have, first up, a procurement, uh, opening of RFP two-three zero-zero-nine, uh, Medical Services District Billing Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Ada County Procurement received five proposals for RFP two-three zero-zero-nine, the Ada County Emergency Medical Services District Billing Services. Uh, Evan has our Bonfire E Procurement System almost queued up.
Says, I'm sharing.
Yeah.
Try and, try and stop it, rejoin.
Okay, there you go, up there. See, that you're on the, the bridge. Any?
It says, it says Evan is starting to share his content, so maybe, can you do a second?
Does he, do you have, on this extended screen, is your, is your back desktop black? No?
You're just tiny up there. It might just be loading.
Pay the internet bill?
Those on Claims Journal better get paid.
Run it down.
Well, I do have a backup plan. Um, we do have this, the sheet here, the, uh, the smittles that we received, so I'll go ahead and read those into the record if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we did receive five proposals. The, uh, first one is Digit Tech Computer LLC. The second proposal is Air Methods Doing Business as Cypheron Healthcare Solutions. Number three is Systems Design West LLC. Number four is Captivate Billing, and number five is Optimistic Healthcare Solutions. Those are our five proposers.
You'll need to have us tape of that, so give me a date.
Uh, yes, we, uh, if we could, uh, get this tabled for final ranking and a warm recommendation to the December sixth, two thousand twenty-two open business meeting.
I'll go ahead and move to table the final rankings and award recommendation of RFP two-three zero-zero-nine, Ada County Emergency Medical Services District Billing Services to December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
We now have the Claims Journal up for, uh, EMS. Is there a motion?
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, now we have two agreements, uh, agreement number one-five oh four-six and one-five oh four-eight. I've read the agreements, is there any discussion, or, uh, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have an EMS update then for us. Go ahead, I guess you're here to give us the update.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, Sean had a scrape of the bottle of barrel today, 'cause everyone else is busy, so, thank you for your time. Um, currently, I mean, everything's looking good in our department. The one thing that, you know, that's, uh, worrisome, that, uh, we have to keep our pulse on, is we're at the perfect storm, uh, of viruses for this time of the year, not necessarily COVID, but we have to worry about RSV, uh, especially as it relates to pediatrics, and we have to worry about influenza A. Uh, right now, all the pediatric beds in the hospitals are full, and so, there's difficulty even being able to move pediatrics who have RSV. And so, that's really worrisome, 'cause we're, we're at capacity there. And so, it's just that time of the year where we have to remind everyone to drink water and.
Urgency, serious.
And, uh, vitamin C.
Are they full because of, uh, physical capacity or, uh, employment capacity?
Physical capacity, all the beds and the, the Peds floor and the NICU, uh, are full.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you tra, have you seen a lot of transfer, uh, transportation, uh, issues or concerns with children? 'Cause last time we talked to Sean, you guys hadn't had any.
Uh, to be honest with you, Commissioner Canyon, I have not looked, um, but I'm more than happy to look at that data for you to let you know if that is the case. Uh, but we have seen a really stark increase of people with influenza A and, uh, RSV on top of COVID, so it's really the perfect storm and trifecta viruses that are going on right now.
You might get more if they can't put them in a hospital, then they're gonna wait at home, and, yeah, not good.
All right, any, any more questions or anything for, uh, our Deputy Chief?
Except both St. Luke's and St. Els.
Uh, St. Els doesn't have a pediatric floor, normally, they, they ship all of those patients to St. Luke's, and St. Luke's is full.
Can they take any, though? I mean, if St. Luke's is full?
Uh, right now, they're boarding patients, and so, I mean, that's a problem that they've had all throughout COVID, is that where there's no beds available, that the patients have to stay in the emergency room and wait and receive care in the emergency room until a bed opens up, so.
So that's a protocol right now.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter, yeah.
All right.
See ya.
All right, and unless there's any further business, uh, we'll, we'll be in recess. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, good morning. Uh, today is Tuesday, November twenty-second. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Avamo Community Infrastructure District Number One, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Amon Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Adam Christensen, Holly Troxel, Bond Counsel for the District.
Okay.
Phil McGrane, Clerk to the Avamo Community Infrastructure District.
Yes, you are. All right, IT guy, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda. Okay, there's, uh, a new, new, uh, business, there is a public hearing. I'll open the, uh, public hearing on Resolution number two-eight one-eight, Resolution Authorizing Segregation of Certain Specialist Assessments in Assessment Number Four. Is there discussion?
Well, maybe I'll have, uh, turn it over to Adam as our Bond Counsel to kind of explain why we're here to, uh, go through this resolution process.
I will do my best. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you may recall, we've done this, uh, several times now. This is actually the fourth segregation, uh, for assessment area four. Um, the, sort of, the short version is, we issued assessment bonds in twenty eighteen, uh, which were backed by, at that time, what was anticipated to be a four-thousand-dollar, uh, assessment per property. Um, at that time, the individual lots were not platted, and so, those assessments were placed in bulk on larger parcels, and then, as Avamo has platted those out, uh, they, we've segregated those, um, and split those out to, to apply to each individual parcel. So this is actually the last segregation, um, that was anticipated back in twenty eighteen. At that time, it was anticipated there would be a hundred and thirty-one lots that would each receive an assessment. Uh, this assessment, uh, brings that total, it, it basically covers the last forty-three lots, so we've done eighty-eight. Uh, there's another forty-three that occur here. Um, at that point, once this is adopted, there'll be a new assessment role. Uh, it'll be the final assessment role. Each individual lot, as originally anticipated four years ago, will now have its assessment. Um, and sort of the build-out of assessment area four, at least from a plating perspective, is complete. I don't know, Amon, if you have anything additional to add to that?
No, I think that's it. This was a, uh, a plat that was approved and recorded back in twenty twenty-one, but it created new tax parcels that were effective the first of January of twenty twenty-two. So, we're getting that cleaned up for this tax year.
Right, before January one, so that it shows up in the assessor's office.
For the next tax year.
And the owners, how were the owners of the properties contacted? Was it?
So, there's a notice that will go out to the new property owners who have acquired those, these lots, so the ones that have been created through this new assessment role, and so, we work with the clerk's office to send that. There's a lien that's recorded, notice of lien, and then also the assessment role is sent out.
And I would say, I mean, each property owner should have received notice at the time that they purchased, purchased in Avamo. Every, every lot in Avamo CID, um, has this four-thousand-dollar assessment. And, and, and to, and just to be clear, it's no longer four-thousand dollars. Um, during this holding period, the last few years, the developers own this property, they've been paying the assessment. So, what actually goes to these individuals will be whatever the original four thousand is, less the principal that's been paid to date.
Okay.
It won't reset at four thousand.
And they all get notice when they buy.
They'll get notice.
Yeah.
But they get, uh, notice when they buy.
They'll get, they got notice when they bought, they also will get notice when it's now, once, once it occurs.
And future owners, yes, will get notice when they buy, 'cause some of these lots are still owned by the developer.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Hearing none, I'll close the, uh, public hearing on Resolution two-eight one-eight. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight one-eight as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the approval of the minutes from nine-twenty and nine-twenty-nine. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've concluded that.
Good to see you, Adam.
Good to see you.
Good holiday.
Yeah, you too. See everybody.
It's been a while, huh?
It has been a while.
So the segregation refers to?
It's the.